I guess we're at six thirty-two, and we do have a quorum, so let's open our meeting. First announcement is that this meeting is being recorded for viewing on Public Radio TV. Chapter ten, channel...
Um, what ninety, I think?
One ninety-two.
One ninety-two?
Okay.
And we actually have members in the audience. I know all about that one. This is...
It's nice to be in a room with other people.
That's no saying.
Everybody has your microphone muted. Can't hear anybody.
Okay.
What microphone?
My phone has microphones.
Those microphones up there.
Oh, did he, did he kick the projector on and all that jazz yet?
You should be all set now.
Yeah, loud and clear, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, first item on the agenda is meetings of the June eighth meeting.
I did not, and I didn't see anything.
Make a motion to accept the June eighth minutes.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do you still have to do roll call votes?
Um, no, because the remote participation is an option, it's not required.
Okay.
So the only way you'd have to do a roll call is if you have one member who's participating, not in the same area here, but, you know, remotely, just for whatever reason, then you'd have to do a roll call at that point, for that circumstance.
Okay, okay, so, once again, any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, we have, yeah, I was... None. We had a hearing for a special permit for a three-lot common driveway at one ninety-two, one ninety-four, and one ninety-six, Glenwood Road. And are the applicants here...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that's the time, it says it more than six forty. It says six thirty-five right now.
Okay, so, then I'll tell you what, since there is something that kind of applies to this...
Yeah, we're good time to take it now.
Let's skip down to item nine, which is a special permit lapse, which at this point I think you're pretty well aware of.
Yeah, so I, um, I just requested the commission give an opinion, or the board give an opinion, we, you know, we didn't know if it could be interpreted as a special permit is to create the lot, or whether the special permit is actually to enable the building permit on the lot. Um, we have a few in town, so if, if the opinion is, has been made by town council, I'd like to just pass that along to the, to the buyers.
We do have it, and, and all I'm gonna do is find it.
Number nine, wasn't it?
Not having much luck so far.
Number nine, uh, last.
This was in twelve, right?
Okay, um...
This is one we have a special permit.
Okay, I don't really wanna read the whole thing, I'm gonna read excerpts, I think, from it. And, uh, a- at this point, this information is, at least until it's read, i- is private to the planning board, so I'm gonna probably at the end of this, ask for a vote to allow it to be made public, because then you can get a complete copy of it.
Yeah, just something, just something giving guidance one way or the other. Thank you.
Anyway, in part, standing partway down, shits out, going through the description that they gave her. And it says, "In my opinion, the special permit granted under the bylaw estate lots was not to create the lots, but to create buildable lots for single-family residential use. In my opinion, setic system design does not constitute construction or substantial use." Uh, she goes on to, uh, and other things, "In fact, it says case law provides physical site preparation, such as demolition, excavation, and leveling does not constitute construction." Or this is a court case, and she cites. Uh, "Noah does the commitment of time, effort, and money preparatory to the construction constitute construction. Further, with respect to substantial use, the special permit allows for a single-family residence, residential use, the facts you provided indicate no evidence of such use of the site." And, uh, anyway, the, the bottom line is, she says, "Because there's no evidence of such use, in my opinion, the special permit has lapsed as a result of non-use."
Okay.
Uh, so, that is the, the opinion. And, uh, do we have to formally make a public, make this public?
Yeah, the board would just have to vote to make it public. I would just add to that, under the provision for special permit to estate lots, there's an A and R requirement embedded in the special permit requirement. The A and R creates the lots, the special permit authorizes the use of the lots, or the state law for the dwelling.
Right, so, no, my hope is just, once it's public, you know, we'll use that with the assessor to get tax abatements and stuff like that, because it's no longer a buildable lot, and then share it with the buyer. And then I'm gonna come back in and try and renew at least three of them, three of them that we have. I don't know if the board would be willing to waive the five hundred dollar fee or not, but I do it, I'm coming in with at least three, and then at least two of those won't get built on right away, so that I'll likely just try and keep renewing those every two years.
Actually, I was just gonna speak to that, once you get your special permit, the special permit can be extended for good cause and reason, for a period of time. So you don't have to renew it every two years, you just have to extend it before it lapses. So in the future, if you do special permits, and you know that they're gonna lapse, because you can't build for whatever reason, you can always request the board, extend those for a period of time.
Yeah.
There's no fee involved with that, and that's just a meeting, not a hearing.
Oh, okay, and it'd be no, so, yeah, that'd be great if there's no fee, if I just come in every couple of years to renew it. Yeah, extend. That's good information, thank you.
Okay, so I don't, uh, okay, first of all, do we have a motion to make this letter from town council public?
Council move on that.
House, nothing, in motion.
Any discussion? And none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just while it's on the agenda, and we're talking about it, if the opinion isn't sufficient, I would hope the board would issue something to the assessor, uh, one, that is more formal if needed, when we go in for the tax abatements on those lots. Because really, they're not a buildable lot without a special permit. So the taxes would be...
If there's no special permit, you would not be a buildable lot.
So the taxes would be significantly reduced.
I think we can confirm that. Now, what the assessor decides to do on that, I don't...
Right, maybe we can talk about that when the time comes.
Well, I, I only ask now because it's on the agenda, that's all.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll have them filed right away.
So, here's a letter that's, this is that information.
Alright, thank you.
Just kinda gets to the opinion itself, so.
Perfect.
So, um, I guess my question is on this application for the common driveway.
Oh, but, would the board be willing to waive the initial permit fees for lots that were already special, granted special permit?
Mr. Chair, if the board's gonna go down this road, I will say that when you come back in again, there still has to be a legal ad sent to the paper, there's a cost there.
And I'll still do the full application plans and everything else.
There's still the cost of staff time. If it goes down this road, I wouldn't advocate for a refund of the entire five hundred, but maybe a portion thereof, just to cover the cost of the legal ad and staff time to process the application, but not the whole thing. Because it has to be dealt with.
No, I'd appreciate that, that'd be great.
But I'm not, that's the board's call, I just wanna maybe just refocus in terms of what the refund might be.
So if it's okay with the board, I'll file all the permits and maybe wait to write the check?
Okay, the, I guess just the, uh, question that I have is on this three-lot common driveway, these are estate lots.
Uh, three estate lots, yes.
Have those special permits expired?
One, one has, and two are actually built on.
Okay.
And this'll be one of the ones that I'm coming back in with.
Okay, okay, uh, it's just that, common driveway is servicing these lots, so...
It's already existing.
You know.
With two houses, you said?
It's existing with two, it's existing to all three lots, and two houses are built on it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I don't think it makes any difference in that decision on the, on the driveway. It's just the two are together, mixed together.
Right.
Okay, uh, okay, on the common driveway, do you have something you'd like to present to us?
Yeah, so I think the plan's in front of you, it's an existing, like I said, it's a constructed driveway. It meets all the regulations, uh, the only thing that might need to be added upon approval is probably the signage, but other than that, everything's constructed, electricity, uh, all, all the aprons to each lot, and I think, believe it meets all the regs. It's, uh, right now it has grindings on it, and it's in real life shape with a paved apron to Glenwood Road.
And the common part of the driveway is all a part of this lot, one ninety-four?
All a part of one ninety-four, and the five hundred foot limit is here, which is prior to the entrance to the other two lots, so at five hundred feet, it's no longer common.
Why is this, is that because it doesn't have the special permit, undevelopable?
Uh, it, no, it's not, it's not undevelopable, it's undeveloped.
Oh, undevelop, okay.
So that's just, that's just, that's not gonna, I just wanted to show that two are constructed and one is not.
And these ones are already in?
Yep, exactly.
This is you?
Yeah, so I'm kinda just saving that, because that's my house up front. That's why I'll probably just...
But this is the one that you're gonna just make sure you stay, every couple of years you're permitted, and just ask for the extension?
Exactly, yep.
Hmm, any comments from the board?
This is the one across from Skip?
Yeah, right across from Skip, yeah, so this is...
Blake's old place?
This is Blake's place, yeah, I'm down here, and everything else is built except this lot.
Yeah.
Any other questions, any comments from the board?
At the present time, no, but I do wanna come back sometime on the road construction and find out, you know, where did that come up? Who came up with the, the design of that? Joe? Or Gary Wayback, or who?
We, we have some language about the driveway construction, but I don't think it's that detailed.
Is that for the common driveway?
Yeah. Yeah, so, in my opinion, when you start putting more than one driveway, you know, or one house lot, now the road's gonna start getting hammered, you might say, a lot of traffic and all that, and it's not gonna last as long as it would probably for one house versus three.
Well, just to play devil's advocate to that, the alternative is it would be three different curb cuts there.
No, it'd be a little bit thicker on the gravel, and thicker on hot top or apron and all that, and I also...
Oh, you mean for the actual driveway itself?
The actual gravel itself.
I thought you were Glenwood Road.
No, no, no. And I also need to find out, um, I always thought there was a leveling area when you, like, went onto Glenwood, if it's a steep thing, and you're coming up, you have to have a leveling plane before you get to the road, and I'm not seeing that. And I remember that was brought up a long time ago.
I know, there has to be a leveling at road intersections.
Yes.
And subdivisions, I don't think.
And subdivisions, or is this not classified as a subdivision, but it, but...
It's not a subdivision.
But when you have three...
Yeah.
Well, I had a question slash comment for the board too, 'cause I'm, and I'll even ask you, I'm not, same type of thing, over time, if this is all on one ninety-four, repairs and maintenance on the road, go back to the cost of who? And then if it's because of drainage, and you don't, maybe you don't know it today, maybe in two years from now, up by here because of the drainage, it caused erosion in the road, who's responsible to repair and...
So that's what's good about the reg.
There, there's a homeowners agreement.
Right, it's all in there.
And that's actually, that's actually specified right in the special permit, yeah.
Number one, it specifies responsibilities, and it also, uh, in writing, released the town of any responsibilities.
And would that put, if you owned number one ninety-two, there's no houses on there, but then it's still incorporated with the common driveway, and repairs need to be done on the common driveway? I'm just, again, you look at that agreement, there's three lots there, are you in it for a third, even though there's not a house on one ninety-two?
Yes.
You are, okay.
Yeah.
That's just, I'm just...
So other than that, I'm okay with this.
I'm okay, we have, we don't have the leveling plan needed at the entrance, because it's not a subdivision?
Yeah.
Not a subdivision, and it's not that bad right there either.
I'm just thinking, take a look at any of our subdivisions, the driveways come down fairly steeply in many, many cases, so, uh, I don't think there's any regulation on that. Is there any question, the comments from the public? I got a notice here for this one.
I got it, I'm here, but I just, I was just curious what the deal was.
Okay. And then, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Make a motion, we close the hearing.
No second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I don't, I don't see that there's any dispute, you can go ahead with your next motion.
No other discussion on the commotion?
Approve the special permit.
Approve the special permit?
Something.
Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you folks, much free to...
I lose my agenda here. Okay, uh, next, continue public hearing, uh, seven PM, at zero, Brimfield Drive, across from thirty-two to fifty-two, seven, for an estate lot. Uh, as we are missing one member of the team, and as in the butter, I have to recuse myself, we do not have sufficient, how call it, we don't really, we don't have a core. We would need a quorum of four to act on this, so we're simply gonna continue it to, to...
The second meeting, the first, first meeting in July, like, the July thirteenth or something?
Yep.
I'll have to look this screen if I check the calendar, so.
Seven o'clock.
Sure, that's, that's fine.
Should I be here?
First day of Brimfield, my birthday.
Well... I'll be here. Who scheduled it last?
So that was the thirteenth?
Yes.
Thanks.
Boy, am I off tonight, do I, we can go vote to continue it?
Yes, the board needs to vote to continue it, yeah. So you can do that with three members.
Make a, make a motion to continue the hearing of Brinfield till July thirteenth at seven o'clock.
And that can be dealt with three members, that's just administrative then.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 I abstain. Okay, next item, Maple Hill Estates subdivision administration.
Um, before you leave, Mr. Chair, I just wanna say that continuance will not be advertised in the paper, you're not gonna receive any further notification of that, please take notice after tonight's hearing that, a meeting that this matter's been continued to the thirteenth of July. So anybody else, when you send all that, you're in touch with them, it'll also be on the agenda, so. Sorry, I just wanted to...
Yep, yep. Okay, Maple Hill Estates subdivision, don't believe we have anything on Maple Hill.
I'm gonna look. This computer wouldn't have it logged, it'd kinda move as fast as the other one. There is a report right here for Bryce, no, there's nothing from Maple Hill.
No. Okay, so, Bryce Lemon Estates is next, we do have a report on Bryce Lemon. Phase two, not much building left to do there, looks like he's framed up probably of the last house, I think at this point. Phase three, housed up there yesterday, and there are two foundations for it.
During the week, or on the weekend?
That was, that was the most active event I saw, I think, what was that, was that, uh...
Been a week or so since I've been up there. I don't know if the logs are still stacked up there.
There's still some of them up there, yeah.
The notice got exten, uh, existing stormwater basin where it's, you know, contains standing water, is that a standard observation, is this?
Yeah, that's what it's there for.
That's what it's there, so it's supposed to, not that it's not supposed to, that was my question, right?
Right. Any other comments on Bryce Lemon?
No.
I'm still kinda waiting to see, and start cleaning up phase two. I have not seen anything, I haven't seen that worked on, on the detention pond, which obviously has gotta be all cleaned out, and all of that, I haven't seen anything happening there.
Do we get anywhere with the rail trail entrance going back, I think that's...
No, and not only did I contact her email, and she got back to me, she says, "I haven't been to the office, I've been, you know, trying to do it remote," and finally I got an email about three weeks ago saying, "I'm heading to the office, let me look for the stuff that you left there," and never heard from her since. Now, I'm supposed to have a meeting, I'm hoping it's either gonna be next week or the week after for the Ware River, and I'm bringing it up to the fact that, uh, I'm not getting...
Not getting anywhere.
Yeah, no contacts, so... But I, I, I am still gonna be involved with that, so help me.
Well, figured that much.
Yeah, because that was the entrance to the gravel bank for Eugene Lemon. So it was already an entrance, it was already something that was there, and I cannot, you know, I'm gonna be very, very brash about it, that, hey, come on, you wanna dump a load of stuff right there and make it, instead of being so steep, make it out.
This doesn't seem so, that should be such a big deal.
Yeah, it doesn't.
No, anyway. Okay, anything further on Bryce Lemon?
No.
Okay, then onward to Brinfield Estates subdivision.
That's tomorrow, isn't it?
Well, yeah, some tomorrow, but, and, uh, I think we need to have a little bit of discussion tonight. Just... To let everybody know, I took a ride up around Garry Hill, and when I was coming back home, I looked down at the end of Grizzly Drive, and Hannigan Engineering was down there. They, so they're, they've been staking out all of the roadway and that sort of thing, Brinfield Estates, so... Anyway, we do have a site walk scheduled for tomorrow, and this was from our request to have a pre-construction meeting with Cleese, and, uh, I've got a hunch that he didn't interpret what we were looking for in the same way that we are. We'll get to the site walk in a minute, but, uh, at least as far as I am concerned, what I am much, much more concerned with is any changes that he has had to make, or is going to make. I know he had obviously some significant talks, discussions, and that with DCR, I don't know, Army Corps, all the other three and four letter, uh, organizations. And my guess is that there probably have been some changes to the plan, we haven't seen any of that. Uh, I know very, particularly there are cul-de-sacs in Brinfield Estates, and I'm sure the plans call for planted islands.
Probably.
Uh, which we're gonna wanna erase, so even, even at a bare minimum, that's gonna require a public hearing. What at least I am looking for is for us to, uh, get some updated plans, well, let's, let's have the plans, let's get them now, not like we did with Bryce Lemon after the fact, let's get them now. Let's schedule a public hearing, let's get whatever waivers he is going to need if we want to grant them, and have that all in place before he starts bulldozing all of it. So, we wouldn't accomplish that at a site walk.
Right.
Okay, uh, so, I, I've got a hunch that's not what Cleese was thinking, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Do we need the site walk, it wouldn't hurt, it's gonna be a gorgeous day tomorrow.
Think he's gonna have the plans there? Maybe, right?
Hmm, I don't know, I kinda doubt it.
What time?
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, the idea was, sorry, that's wrong, because I don't, because it's not really a designated place per se at the subdivision, the idea was to leave from Town Hall here and go to the site, you know, at that time. So it's kind of a collective site visit, most planning boards' site visits happen on your own individual time, so you don't run into the issue of having multiple members together at the same time. But you know where it would be if people wanted to just go there? You have any idea where the site visit itself would start, if you folks just wanna go?
Most likely, the pumping station.
Most likely, most likely.
Place would be the pump station.
So...
How much walking do you plan to do?
I'm not planning on doing any.
Oh, okay.
Because I've already walked it. Now, I'm not saying I won't, but right now I'm not, I'm not planning, I, I was there when Army Corps and DCR, uh, were there looking over everything, and, uh, you don't wanna walk it, let me just put it this way.
Okay.
Okay, I don't really want to, I know you don't want to.
I didn't think I wanted to, but...
But you can still show up, and, you know, and we can have whatever discussions. I'm assuming Cleese is not on the line?
I asked him, I, I, I requested that it might be in his interest to attend tonight's meeting for this discussion, to understand what the board's looking for, I haven't, I don't have any response from him at this point, he's not here now.
He's not here now, so, so I guess those discussions will need to take place at the site walk. Did Joe Buckley say he was gonna be there too?
I believe so.
That's good, I, I went to look through my emails, I thought I saw it somewhere. But I couldn't find it, anyway. Okay, um...
Too bad, 'cause it would've been a nice day for a bike ride.
Yes, would be a nice day to work in the garden. Which I will be leaving right from there and then going, working in my garden.
Yeah.
Two days before the heat wave comes back.
Yes.
Okay, uh, anything else on Brinfield Estates?
If, if, um, Mr. Buckley is there tomorrow, is that a time to have the discussion that we were, if we did have a follow-up on that discussion about the gravel?
Not for that subject matter, no.
No, okay, no.
Not a subject matter that would be fair against the subdivision itself.
Keep it separate, alright, just to make sure, alright.
Like I say, I'm stepping... Like I say, I'm stepping in a little bit, maybe where I shouldn't, but I think Britton Estates is another good reason for him to provide.
Right.
Because that's another thirty houses or thereabouts. And that's going to be a lot of traffic on the road. Anyway. Okay. Excuse me. I don't make Bear Hill two subdivision. We do have a report from Quill Engineering. I don't see anything particular of it. In that first intended paragraph, there's obviously been some dispute. Retiring number six on Arrowhead Way. And I also, I took a look at that one yesterday. I guess one thing I noticed, they're still, it seems like they're really turned around. I haven't noticed them, that they brought in any gravel, roadway or anything yet. And it was a little bit breezy when I was up there, and boy, let me tell you, it was dusty. I'll read through that, that little bulletin. It ended by. And I was just wondering if it might be appropriate, since there does seem to be, I'm going to call it what I think it is, a dispute, if we should contact our engineer just to verify that the roadway is being built in accordance with the approved plan, both location and elevation. I'd like to point the board's input on that.
Yes, by all means.
Always a good idea.
So the request again is?
To, to verify that the Bear Hill two subdivision is being built in accordance with the approved plan, according to both location and elevation.
Would be nice, hopefully, that he's already done that. Pulled it out and verified it.
He probably has.
Let's just make sure.
I'm just saying, I think it'd just be wise on our part to get that verification.
Yeah.
And, well, you never know, he might find that something is wrong.
Yeah.
Possibly. Anything else on Bear Hill two?
I was up there a little while ago, but hopefully the drainage and all that is in, it was exposed from the first house there, number six and the new roadway, so I don't know how they were going to attach it to a drain or what.
Well, let's say that, once again, that's what we have, our engineer.
That's right.
I'm not an engineer. I'm not going to pretend to be. Anything else on Bear Hill two?
Did you drive on the road, is it drivable yet?
No, I didn't, it probably is.
Yeah.
Well, let's put it this way, from the, from the Arrowhead part.
Yeah.
Yes, they were still, they were doing, I don't know what the heck they were doing on the lower part where it comes into. What is that?
Yeah.
Vista? No, not Vista. I guess that's part of Grizzly.
It is part of Grizzly.
Yeah, that lower part, because it looked, it looked like they were, they had actually roughed it up. Like grubbed it with, you know, like a big grub on the back of the bulldozer, something like that. And it wasn't up there, it wasn't like that when I was doing the site walk. So I don't know.
I'll try to keep people off of it. Might be still soft.
Well, either that or part of the compaction process, I don't, again, that's, that's engineering, that's not me. The, the other end of it on Arrowhead looked like it was well-compacted.
Yeah.
And so forth. The only thing that bothers me a little bit is, I, I know that soil is very, very, very fine stuff. And if there's any part that isn't compacted, you could get yourself in trouble with the road. So. I'll wait until we get gravel on it.
Yeah. Not a bad idea. Because there is a little bit of wetlands there behind one of those houses that they, I thought they were getting very close to when they were digging.
Oh, yeah.
See what happens.
Okay, anything else on Bear Hill two?
No.
We already covered number nine. Boy, we're going tonight.
If I come home too early for Crown Road. That could be good.
Supper won't be ready, right? Okay, town meeting follow-up. And I guess, well, the only thing I can say comment-wise is phase one of Bryce Lemon got accepted. What else did we have on there?
Yeah, eleven A, light industrial office replaced its entirety with new language.
The, yeah, new language for light industrial office, that passed. And the marijuana article did not. And that's kind of, I don't know.
There was something in that the industrial building that referred to switching the special permit.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, which that was, well, it was, okay. That was an amendment that I made to the warrant article to have the planning board be the site plan review board for that. And that, I don't know, I don't recall anybody made any objection to it.
No.
So, that, that kind of.
Smart move.
Went, that went through pretty well as well, so. I guess our big thing is what's coming up on the twenty-eighth. That's.
Oh, boy. Hang on to your hat.
That is going to be interesting.
Or should I say your wallet?
Well, we'll see. Okay, master plan.
Then hopefully, the next time, we will have our town meeting in our own school and that, down in that thing where somebody could get lost very easy. In that menagerie of hallways.
I hate to admit it, but actually, I thought it was pretty nice.
Yeah, it was nice.
Well, let's put it this way, high-class stuff that was there, shown.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
But right before we left, we found out there was handicapped parking down the, right behind, you know, with that door open right there.
Yeah, yeah, right there. But we had to walk all.
We walked in the front.
I'll be happy to have it back on our own home turf.
Yeah.
Hey, it worked, it worked well. And actually, I was kind of surprised, it was a decent turnout.
Yeah. Yeah, a hundred and twenty-something people there, so.
Okay, master plan update.
Master plan update, so the master plan steering committee has been meeting consistently since February. There's a survey that's still out, the survey's still open. I think at last count, we've received something like five hundred responses, we're hoping to get a few more.
I'm looking at five hundred?
What does that survey run through?
That decision hasn't been made. I will say that the master plan steering committee is next meeting on Thursday. And that's, one of the items is to determine whether or not to continue it or not. The regional planning commission has been keeping track of the numbers. So I guess, once they give us information, we can make a better, they can make a better decision tomorrow.
Nice to have more than five hundred, I mean, it's, what did we get on the town center?
I think we got close to seven, eight, eight, eight to nine.
That's what I thought, I mean, you'd get, you'd get just as much, it's just as important a survey, you know?
I mean, there was a second push. There's a reminder to the community, it's on the town's Facebook page, the town's website. We asked for the principals to distribute it to interested parents and students. It's on the sign up the road. We've worked with the network that the MPC has to push it out, the message. So, I, yeah, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll remind folks after the town center, we got close to nine hundred and it's possible. So maybe they'll decide to close it out at a convenient time, say, you know, June thirtieth and then, you know, July first, because there's other things that are happening as well, such as the visioning statement, the master plan steering committee over the last couple of meetings has been working on a draft vision statement. So we now have a draft of that document. They've also been working, and the next step after that is to take the survey information and the visioning statement and convert that into goals for housing, economic development, and land use. And so the next step would be to finalize the vision statement and to get a good draft document of the goals. And they finalize the goals, and then in the not-too-distant future, have a forum open to the public. Maybe a couple of forums, we haven't really decided that, but a couple of forums, at least one forum, definitely. What's suggested that, might be useful to have boards and committees get together to at least look at the master plan, to see if anybody has ideas collectively from the board and committee level, as opposed to the public level, have different types of meetings, to go after different groups. So that's maybe something for tomorrow to discuss, but that, that is the update in brief.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, I'd support that.
Especially, I have one big one for Crown Road.
So I wonder if there's, is there, is there a way to remind everybody at the special meeting on the twenty-eighth of the master plan survey, I don't know if, you know, people are going there, making outfit that night, hand out the QR codes as they're walking in.
That's not a, that's not a meeting.
That's going to be, that's an election.
Oh, I thought that was a special meeting.
That's not, that's an election.
That's just an election.
Just going and voting.
What are you going to do without the elections then? Hand out the QR codes?
Too bad that you, you have a point.
I mean, all it is is that you can photocopy that QR reader and just hand it to every person that walks in. They walk out with it in their pocket.
I mean, I will say that we did have a document, we had paperwork advertising the survey at the town meeting, and we actually took back most of what we had, had hoped to pass out to people, so. I don't know, I have to talk to Anita to see if that's permissible in an election situation.
Soliciting, right?
It's permissible at a town meeting because you have information.
Good point.
Of general, general information to the public in the town meeting setup. I'm not sure it's appropriate for an election.
Right, gotcha. Just an idea.
But we won't be talking about it further to see if we can get, you know, if we need to do one more push, we'll talk about that.
Okay, get a lottery ticket. Anybody who, you know, anybody who comes, signs up, you know, fills out the form there, gets a chance to win a million dollars. Well, maybe not.
Yeah.
But like, they're doing that for the, with the lottery and the vaccines.
Yeah, yeah, well, we did have a contest, somebody volunteered a gift basket. So if you do fill out the survey, you're, you could be eligible to win a gift basket. But you have to just click off that as that you're interested. So we tried to incentivize it somehow. So I guess maybe, and this is the forum, so the master plan survey is still open. Still open until, at least till the end of the week, if anybody's interested in taking it, or if you know someone who has or has not. Please make, please feel free to make them aware of that.
Okay, we went on to last item, town center study.
So the town center study has been meeting for over a year now. We're getting into the final stages of this project. The town center study committee had a meeting today to finalize recommendations. There were several recommendations made under different categories, such as traffic control, building assessments, trail and park connectivity, priority parcels, trail connectivity and so forth, outdoor recreation. So under several categories, there are several recommendations made. So the group, the group finalized those recommendations today. We have consensus on all the recommendations made. And there are a series of priority parcels. Priority parcels are parcels that the town owns or has control over, or where there may be development or other possibilities. So the group also identified several of those parcels as well. So the next step is for the regional planning commission, who we are working with, to finalize that into a report and then distribute that report for further comment amongst boards and commissions and the public. So, we would like to get that to the planning board first for any comments you may have, then to the select board, AdCom, probably Concom would be appropriate, and distribute it to the public through the town's website and the Facebook page. And we always have the ability to, to create an addendum to it. So if there's new recommendations, you know, new recommendations that come in later, to capture those as an addendum. Because we don't want to let any good idea go to waste. So if there's some possibility of doing something, you know, that we haven't thought of, then, you know, that's the idea. So try to get as many recommendations as possible. One thing the planning commission will be doing is to prioritize these in terms of time to achieve the various recommendations, and also how much it would cost to implement them and help to identify funding sources as well. Some can be done internally, some may need grants, some maybe as volunteers from the community, volunteer donations from the community or work or services. So we're going to try to, you know, try to, try to understand what we can do, when and how and how much. That's it for that, thank you.
Well, I guess very, very particularly, I know we don't have this on our agenda, but we do have a couple of members of the public who have been patiently sitting here. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Yes. I was wondering if I could ask if there's a process for exactly that, somebody from the member of the public to bring up, go back to something on the agenda at which you didn't ask for input at the time.
I'm not sure, hold it at us.
Okay. Well, I didn't want to be out of order.
Yeah, what I mean.
So the question is on this, you're Britton, continuation for July fourteenth. Could, would it be possible to have the chief of the DPW at that meeting? For that topic?
We can ask.
Sure, if the board would like to make that request, we would take that request from the board and see if that staff is available on that night, as well as any other staff you may want to request to be in attendance, such as consulting engineers.
Yeah.
I think pulling him into the loop would be a good thing, absolutely.
I, well, I think.
If.
I don't want to comment too much on, on that thing myself, but it certainly appears to me that he's, he's going, he's going to have to become a player in that.
Yes.
So, yeah.
It's all about connectivity for me. Let's make sure that everybody, you know, he's, somebody's saying this and they're saying that, let's make sure that it's actually happening. You know what I mean? Make sure everybody knows what everybody's talking about and with the sewer going down the middle of the road and all these other things that, you know, we didn't originally know about, so let's make sure he knows about it.
Well, I mean, also, I think Concom should be, you know.
Probably should.
Someone involved, because it might make a big change. Who knows? We, we don't know, because we don't have all the boxes checked off yet, so.
Would you like to request?
I would like to request that, if possible, to have Concom involved.
At least one member, so it's not a quorum of a meeting, maybe a member or two.
And would, and they would be, you know, educated a little bit as to the reason that they're going to be here. You know what I mean? Let them know why we want them to be here, if there's certainly even there's certain lots or certain wetland areas or whatever it is that we're specifically discussing. Director Buckley.
Is there anybody else you'd like for staff to invite?
Anybody else that? Right offhand, I think that is about it.
Particularly at this point, the active players right now.
Because all it's going to take is one or the other to step in and say, oh, wait a minute, they have this kind of a problem here. And it might throw a monkey wrench into the work, so.
Right.
We'll go with what you have.
Good.
Yes.
I was delayed by a couple of detours getting here on time. I was interested in seeing, on Glenwood Road, there was a common, common driveway issue. Did you go, was that on the agenda?
Yes.
What was decided?
Have you, do you have names? Do we need the names?
Yeah, name and address, just for.
Robert Daw, Holden, but my family has none on Glenwood Road.
And, and we need yours while we're going.
Sure, my name is Kurt Roll, fifty-two Babel.
Okay, thank you.
We wanted to grant the special permit on the common driveway.
Okay. And that's for three residential?
Right.
Two already existing and one not built yet.
Okay.
Right.
Is that the thing?
Yeah, this is it.
Yeah. And that's right, right across from Skip Clark?
Yeah.
So there's the driveway there, and then we just discussed, there's a five-hundred foot which you can't be past, and there's one or two, this is vacant, an argument.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
And I guess one other item, I think?
Sure.
Uh, since we didn't discuss, our board didn't discuss, uh, Zero Brenton tonight, um, I don't know if it's, if I should request or make a comment for the next meeting, that I sent in some information for this meeting, just to make sure, or to ask, make sure that, uh...
Was that?
We'll have that covered in the next meeting.
The information that you distributed on behalf of the neighbors has yet received by the planning staff, you distributed to the planning board?
I'm sorry?
And distributed to the planning board?
Is that...
I'm answering, well, I, I take, I took what you had said as a question. If the question is, has the material that used to be on behalf of the neighbors then received by the planning staff? The answer is yes, and it has been distributed to the planning board as well.
Okay.
Is that what you were asking?
I think that covers my, my question, I was just asking for the next, um, continuation to the thirteenth, if we, it would be included in what we...
Well, you'd be at that meeting, so if you see fit to, during the public portion of the meeting, what's recognized to speak, have a need to speak to those items, then that would be your call to do so at that point in time. The information has been distributed to the planning board, however, since they haven't.
It would not hurt for you to, you or any one of the neighbors to speak up on, you know, any, any and all of those things. And again, probably speaking my own is a rude remark, but I would just have to comment, I looked at it and I'm just gonna say very, very well done. So...
I can only find where the heck I put it.
Wasn't it a package?
I didn't see it, it was in the emails.
I printed it out.
It was sent as a separate...
It was in the email.
I got funny feelings, I think I left it on the kitchen counter.
Well, you'll be home in ten minutes to be able to look at it, it's good. We did get it, yeah.
All right, um...
Is there any other...
Town resources, that, that was pretty interesting, the, your town resources.
Well, there's more to it than that. There wasn't, there was an email, maybe you can just describe what you're talking about, just so we, you wanna put that to the record for a second. It was an email to the business community on the one part, that was in the body of the email itself, and those were attachments to it.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was just sent as informational to the board, um, because the board does the permitting, so you should be aware that this has been distributed.
Of the different organizations and the people that are involved in it, and I thought that was very, very handy, so...
That was from the, um, Ron, huh?
Yeah.
Yes, from Ron.
Just for the record.
And also, I would like to thank Tamika for sending us out the...
Oh, yeah, which I honestly haven't looked at yet.
That's correct.
Either of I, I just printed it out just prior to coming tonight, so, and, and for you to keep this up like this, good job.
Thank you.
By all means.
She's, did you see that, she's... She is, um, doing the, the bookkeeping amendment for the committee, and then sends us a couple of times a year the status of what's in, you know, where we stand financially.
Right, just on everything, all right.
So, should we be getting another, um, have we got all the money for Bryce Lemon?
He recently re-upped the account. He recently re, added to the account, yeah. And that should be reflected on, uh, the one for the subdivision.
By the way, I also just appreciate, a lot of times when, like, Beth has questions and that sort of thing, that you, you know...
Oh, no problem, absolutely, I'm happy to help.
Yeah, answer. Which, I, I just, once again, I just wanna make sure, uh, she had asked about the alternate representative to CMRPC. My recollection is that appointment is to be made by the select board.
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I told her, so...
Yeah, I, yes, that's correct.
I just wanted to make sure of that one.
And that further, it doesn't have to be a planning board member, it could be any citizen.
Yeah.
Who has any interest in maybe.
Actually, she said, she fired back, she said she was gonna contact Sean Moore to see if he wanted to be reappointed.
I think that was it, 'cause it's the, it's the reappointment season.
Yeah. Is there any other business to come before the board?
No, very nice to have a, in person, this is great.
Alex, up the motion.
Oh, I, just to let you know, one, one thing that, uh, because the planning board, uh, is involved in this thing, the open space recreation, this is, you know, something to develop a trail, you know, connecting Patnam, Patnam Park to the rail trail. And I pulled out the two items out of the book, and, uh, twenty seventeen. And, uh, it's, it's time to try to get this thing done. And, uh, so, get a letter typed up and get, and, I'm gonna, on a letterhead, and I'm gonna give it to Dave to put it on, and then I'll mail it down, down to the people that own the property and, um, go in there. Hopefully have a, have a meeting with them and go from there, you know? Yes.
That's fun, my park is underutilized, for sure.
Yes.
Absolutely, underutilized.
So I just wanna make sure I have it, so that's okay to put on a planning board letterhead?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Maybe CC to Concom, the open space recreation committee, Charlie?
I think that'd be great.
'Cause it came out here in twenty seventeen.
Yes, yeah.
Alex, up the motion here.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Oh my gosh, seven twenty-nine, man. That's in the paper?
I think this is a record.
Aye.